rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own, with liberty and justice for all.
We please start with the roll call.
Council President O'Halloran. Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I'd like to excuse the absent councilmember.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that we excuse the absent councilmember. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And first up, tonight, we have a proclamation. It is National Service Dog Month.
Right, proclamation, whereas in the United States, sixty-four million adults and children have a disability and only sixteen thousand service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. And whereas K-9 Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of Renton residents with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships while empowering individuals to live more independent lives. And whereas the city of Renton believes in the transformative power of the human canine bond and continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all residents and their dogs, including service dogs, are respected. And whereas the city of Renton operates a four-acre Cedar River Dog Park and off-leash dog area, welcomes dogs on leashes in most city parks, has recreation programming such as Pooch Plunge and K-9 Candy Cane 5K Fun Run and Walk that includes K-9 Friends, and welcomes service animals in our recreation buildings, including the Renton Community Center, Don Person Renton Senior Activity Center, and the Highlands Neighborhood Center. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them, now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-three to be National Service Dog Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all residents to join me in this special observance. And witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand to cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed since eighteenth day of September two thousand twenty-three. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move we adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, to accept the proclamation, we have two people here. We have Erica Del Casio, and she has her dog, service dog Kate. And we also have Ms. Lee Cummings, and she's with the K-9 Companions from the Puget Sound Volunteer Chapter. Would you like to say a few words? Oh, just read it over to the podium so that everybody can.
Sit. You got it. Down. Down. Sit. Down.
Yeah, she's really excited.
Well, I want to say, Mayor, and also to the beautiful city of Renton, thank you so much for this honor. We greatly appreciate everything that you're doing for our community. And, you know, also, on behalf of K-9 Companions, myself, my service dog Kate, and the Puget Sound Chapter, we're just so grateful for this honor. I received my service dog actually seven, I'm sorry, three, almost three years ago. I suffered a stroke during a brain tumor surgery, and unfortunately, I became disabled. You know, I'm hemiplegic, so I'm not able to use the right side of my body. So Kate has become one of the many mobility devices I use. I call her my right-hand woman or right-hand lady because I literally tell her to pick up any item that I need, or if I need to get my wheelchair, she's able to tug it for me. I mean, if she needs to call, if I call for my husband, she knows to go get my husband. And she just loves pushing the buttons to go open the doors for me. And she just really goes above and beyond, and she has given me my independence back. And it's, sorry, I don't want to get emotional for you, but it's just really, I have seen a different life now with my service dog, and I hope that I'm able to show that to you. And I'm just one story of so many other people that also have received a service dog, and they themselves can also talk to you about how their service dogs have changed your life. Thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm Lee Cummings. I want to thank Mayor Pavone and the rest of the council members in the city of Renton for this opportunity of declaring September Service Dog Month. Service dogs, service dogs start, actually, as eight-week-old puppies. Mars is now fifteen months old, and in two months, will leave for professional training in Santa Rosa, California. He is actually the fifth dog I've raised, and number six will come in December. But it's been, the city of Renton has been so open in allowing me to train my dogs. I'm also a volunteer trainer and train other chapter members' dogs in and around Renton, one of our favorite places. We love to go to Home Depot. They're, they're great. And I have to add that the Family First Community Center has been great and actually refers to Mars as their dog. He goes, he's the only dog we'll let in here. And I go, and they do have a big sign that says, "Service Dogs Only." But we want to thank you so much for recognizing that service dogs serve a need in our community. And along those lines, I want to let you know that K-9 Companions is opening a Seattle field office. The official grand opening is this Thursday, the twenty-first, in Soto across from Starbucks, and that will allow us to train and place more dogs in the Puget Sound region. First three dogs that will receive their advanced training are there now. And so you'll see lots more blue-fested dogs that are training, and maybe many more Renton residents will get service dogs. And so just so you know, so, blue means they're pros, yellow means I hope to be a pro someday. He's in rookie camp. So thank you again for declaring September National Service Dog Month.
Thank you very much for being there.
We're going to take some pictures. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yeah.
In motion, we have puppies at every meeting.
Right?
The cutest thing.
Okay, well, it's going to be tough to top that, but next is the administrative report.
I will do my best. Good evening, everyone. Remember, this season's final Renton Farmers' Markets will shift hours of operation to two to six p.m. on Tuesdays, September nineteenth and twenty-sixth, the last two chances to purchase fresh, locally grown produce and support Washington farmers. Find us at Piazza Park, corner of South Third Street and Logan Avenue South, for free parking in the city parking garage located off South Second Street between Burnett and Logan Avenues. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting. Unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment, and we do have one person signed up. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name, city, and the topic you'd like to discuss. There's a timer. And first up is Jan Molinaro from Sound Cities Association.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Jan Molinaro. I'm the mayor of Enham Claw, but today I am here as your Sound Cities Association president. And my main purpose is three different items. One is I want to thank the city of Renton for being one of thirty-eight partners with Sound Cities. Renton does contribute more than the average city pick meets here. We also come into the Renton Pavilion for our networking events, and this is truly appreciated. So as a valued member, you know you have a voice with Sound Cities, and we deeply appreciate that. Secondly, if some of you have not attended an SCA networking event, we encourage you to do that. We do have another one scheduled at the end of October. I think it's the twenty-fifth of October. It'll be an interesting topic that's on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. An email may have been sent out recently, so that, please register. If you haven't attended, it's a great opportunity to be able to network with your fellow electeds, as well as our partners that are very important to the organization, such as Boeing, which I know you folks know a couple things about, so. And I would like to conclude and thank several of the council members and mayor for who are currently serving on our one of twenty-seven boards and commissions that Sound Cities is able to appoint. So if you're not involved now, but you have an interest, we will be soliciting some applications coming up soon this year, because some openings will be occurring on those twenty-seven different boards and commissions, so please keep that in mind. And on another note, that's not Sound Cities, I just want to thank the city of Renton for allowing myself and others from the city of Enham Claw. Tomorrow, we're going to be touring your Family First facility. We're really excited about that. We're trying to put together a bond for community center, so this gives us an opportunity to see a brand-new facility, how it operates, and we're very excited about that, and I thank you. And thank you for tonight. And if you do have anything you would like to talk to me about, cityofenhamclaw.net, look for the mayor, and then please email me. That's probably the easiest way to do it. Thank you, and have a great meeting.
Thank you, Jan. All right, next up is the consent agenda. There are seven items for council's consideration. Are there any the council would like to pull?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has seven committee reports to present.
Six.
Six. Well, please, they're going to get it right.
Okay. The first committee report is regarding a cost reimbursement grant with King County Sheriff's Office for sex offender registration verification. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the sex offender cost reimbursement grant with the King County Sheriff's Office in order to receive up to fourteen thousand one hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents for reimbursement of overtime costs associated with verifying addresses and residency status of registered sex and kidnapping offenders. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Halberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
And the next report is regarding a grant for the park sports courts at the Talbot Hill Reservoir Park. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the RCO grant agreement with the state of Washington per Resolution four seven seven-two. The Finance Committee further recommends adjusting the budget to reflect the three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant funding for the Talbot Hill Reservoir Park Court Sports Courts project. The total cost of the Talbot Hill Reservoir, Reservoir Park Sport Court project, per the grant agreement, is seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, of which the city-funded portion is four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, using City three, three-one-six funds, which is Municipal Facilities Capital Improvement Program. The grant agreement imposes restrictions on the use of the park for public recreation purposes and limits fees in perpetuity. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendations of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding another grant for Coolon Pathways and Parking Lots Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing application to the State Recreation and Conservation Office for a local parks maintenance grant for the Coolon Pathways and Parking Lots Project in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the assumption of the Rent and Transportation Benefit District. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to adopt a resolution setting October second, two thousand twenty-three, as the public hearing date for assumption of the Rent and Transportation Benefit District. Following the public hearing, the committee further recommends the adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter Seven, assuming the Rent and Transportation Benefit District to Title Five of the Rent Municipal Code. This is also signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next is regarding a grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for a Recycling and Organics Technical Assistance Program. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the interagency agreement number SWMLSFWA- dash twenty twenty-three, dash Renton, dash zero zero one two four, which is our contract number twenty-three two eighty-nine, with the state of Washington, Department of Ecology, to accept one hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars in grant funds to implement a recycling and organics technical assistance program for businesses. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It had been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Hey, the final Finance Committee report is another grant agreement with King County this time for the RE plus recycling program. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute interagency agreement with King County for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four RE plus city grant, which is our contract twenty-three two ninety, to accept a hundred thousand dollars in non-matching grant funds to implement a recycling and organics technical assistance program for businesses in the city of Renton and Kent. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Is it for Finance Committee, sir?
Correct. Councilmember Van.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee has one committee report.
Hey, this report is regarding a school resource officer interlocal agreement with the Renton School District. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement for school resource officer two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year between the city of Renton and the Renton School District. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
I move that the council concur with the Public Safety Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Public Safety Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Councilmember Alberston.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has two reports to present.
All right, Utilities Committee, this one is regarding the two thousand twenty-four King County wastewater treatment charge rate adoption. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance approving the two thousand twenty-four King County wastewater treatment charge, which is a pass-through rate increase of five point seven-five percent to match King County's adopted rate effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberston.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, seconded by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final report for Utilities Committee is regarding agreements with Segal, Segali, Segal?
Ollie.
Segal Properties LLC for the Monroe Avenue Northeast Infiltration Facility Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the execution of the permanent utility easement, temporary construction easement, and purchase and sale agreements with Segal Properties LLC in the amount of four million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars for the construction of the Monroe Avenue Northeast Infiltration Facility Project. The Utilities Committee further recommends an ordinance for the acquisition of the easements located at three oh one Monroe Avenue Northeast under the imminent threat of eminent domain be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, seconded by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. And we are on to Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has two reports to present.
The first report is regarding change order number five to Contract two-two-one-sixty-three with the Pavetta Brothers Construction. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve change order number five to Contract two-two-one-sixty-three in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-nine cents with Pavetta Brothers Construction Incorporated for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four project.
Mr. Mayor.
It's Mayor McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The final report is also regarding a change orders, change order number six to the contract with Pavetta Brothers Construction. So the Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve change order number six to Contract two-two-one-sixty-three in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars with Pavetta Brothers Construction Incorporated for a revised plan for the clearing and grubbing of grass, trees, and shrubs for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. And we didn't miss anybody, right? Okay. We're on to legislation. We have three resolutions and two ordinance for first reading.
Okay, the first resolution is regarding. All right. It's authorizing amendment number two to the interlocal agreement for the community development block grant. So a resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into the second amendment to the joint interlocal agreement regarding the community development block grant program between the city and King County.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that a resolution be adopted as read.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next resolution is regarding the application for a grant for maintenance of pathways and parking lots at Jean Coolon Park. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, providing certain city personnel with signing authority to apply for grant funds from Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office to finance maintenance of pathways and parking lots at Jean Coolon Memorial Park.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that a resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Hey, the final resolution is regarding the setting of a public hearing for the assumption of the Rent and Transportation Benefit District. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, declaring the city council's intent to conduct a public hearing concerning the assumption of the rights, powers, functions, and obligations of the Rent and Transportation Benefit District, and setting the date, time, and place for said public hearing, which I believe is October second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that a resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
By Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council approve the, or adopt the resolution as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The first ordinance is for first reading only regarding the pass-through rate for King County Metro Wastewater. So an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section eight, five, fifteen, D of the Rent Municipal Code, establishing the King County Metro Wastewater pass-through rate for two thousand twenty-four, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberston.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, seconded by Councilmember Rivera, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final ordinance is for first reading also. It's regarding the acquisition of easements for three oh one Monroe Avenue North. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, providing for the acquisition of a permanent utility easement and temporary construction easement located at three oh one Monroe Avenue Northeast, Renton, Washington, under imminent threat of eminent domain, for a stormwater and water quality treatment project, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Alberston.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, seconded by Councilmember Rivera, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And that's it for legislation. We are on to new business. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, September twenty-fifth, at six p.m., the Planning Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room in my video conference. We have three items on the agenda. First, the two thousand twenty-three School District Capital Facilities Plan, two thousand twenty-four Renton Regional Fire Authority Capital Facilities Plan, and respective impact fees and fire marshal fees. Second, we have docket eighteen, Group C, D two twenty-nine, eating and drinking and other food-related land uses, and D two thirty, sports arenas, auditoriums, and exhibition halls. And then, third, we have emerging issues and CED. And then, for Council President O'Halloran, the committee hall meeting on O'Halloran, the committee hall meeting on Monday, September 25 is canceled, and our council meeting will be at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers and by video conference. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, September 25, 2023, at 4:45 p.m., the Finance Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and also via video conference. We have five items on the agenda. First, acceptance of the Association of Washington Cities Alternative Response Team Grant. Second, agreement with Project B Free for Co-Response Services. Third, Amendment Number Two to CAG-20-154 with Inside Public Sector for Microsoft M365 Enterprise Agreement Renewal. Fourth, vouchers. And fifth, emerging issues in finance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business.
Okay, Councilmember Alberston.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
What's the wish of the council?
Move be adjourned.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? Say no. We're adjourned.